Good morning. Welcome to our Minnai County Commission meeting for March 25th, 2025. I'm going to call our meeting to order and note that we have a full quorum of commissioners present today. Before we get started, just reminder to silence your cell phones, and I'd ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any item on our consent agenda? All right. Commission, any comments or requests on the consent agenda? If not, look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Izzy.
Aye.
Blenberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Fenega.
Aye.
Kurski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on then to our regular business. Our first agenda item is a job evaluation and compensation study presentation. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. You probably recall that last fall, the commission signed a contract with McGrath Human Resources Group to conduct a job evaluation and classification study. Over the last several months, employees, some employees have been completing forms describing their positions, department heads have been meeting with Dr. Victoria McGrath, and I'm pleased to share that the study findings are wrapping up, and we have Dr. McGrath here today to present her findings to the commission.
Great. Thank you very much, Carrie. Are you going to put the PowerPoint up?
I believe it is shared and ready to go.
All right. So thank you very much for the opportunity this morning. I am Dr. Victoria McGrath. I'm CEO of McGrath Human Resources Group. We're a firm that was established in the year 2000, so we're celebrating our 25th anniversary this year. There's basically two sides to the business. McGrath Consulting Group, Inc. is the parent company, and we do public safety consulting, police, fire, EMS, and dispatch. And then we broke off in 2012 to McGrath Human Resources Group because we do human resources consulting for the entire organization, not just public safety, and so we work from the county level on down. And so we are pleased to present some of the findings. Next slide, Carrie. So I'm going to start out a little bit backwards because I think we need to kind of set the stage of what's the demographics within your organization, and that's something that tells us a lot about your organization as well as what type of compensation system we should be looking at. Right now, you have 47% of your workforce, almost half is under the age of 40, and that's pretty significant because that's the workforce that is typically the most mobile. I had a client last year that called it the shiny object population where, you know, if they see something for a dollar or $2 more across the street, even if it's a different industry, that they're going to move. They don't have that type of loyalty at this point in time to an organization. And so the question is, you're getting them in the door, but, you know, what are you going to do to keep them in the door and after you spend money on training them and having them learn the job? The other thing that I think is kind of a little bit unique for you is the other half of the population is between 40 and 59, and that's typically a more stable workforce. So you've got a really good, solid foundation of folks that are there. You do have some folks that are 60 and above, and then the question's going to be, you've got that knowledge walking out the door in the next several years as they decide to do something a little bit more fun than the fun job that they already have. And so when we look at your compensation system, one of the things that we really need to focus on is what are you going to do to recruit, because you're doing a very good recruitment, but then what's your retention? What's your strategy to keep them there within the organization? Next one? So what we did, as Carrie has mentioned, we did do interviews with administration and the heads of each department. Some of them had some of their second command, because even though we've been doing and working with municipalities for the past 25 years, we're in 41 different states, we don't know your organization, and we need to understand what your organization is and what those positions are. We looked at your current compensation system and its practices. As Carrie mentioned, we did have some employees, not every employee, complete something that's called a position questionnaire. The position questionnaire actually evaluates a job into 13 different competencies, and it assigns points to them. And so how that makeup of points might be very different from an administrative assistant to an equipment operator, but they may still end up in the same pay grade because they have similar point totals. And then we evaluated every one of those position questionnaires. We did solicit compensation data from other public sector organizations, and we'll show you that list in just a moment. And we do collect the minimum, the midpoint, the maximum, so we ask for their actual salary schedule. And then we also ask for incumbent data. What are people actually making? So since I'm picking on equipment operators, give me what the average salary is of all the equipment operators within your organization. And that is typically a truer reflection of what the market is than actually a salary range, but we do obviously look at the salary range as well. Once we developed the system, we then met with each department director to go through that system to make sure that we had positions aligned correctly. If I believe Carrie also met with them a second time to go over those positions to make sure that we were all reading the same job responsibilities appropriately. And then we did collect information on benefits. I'm not going to go into the benefits issue at this point in time, but we'll talk about some of the topics that we covered. Next, please? So the next slide is all the list of the organizations that we went to. The only one that did not participate was Potawatomi, and I kind of bring that out just because if Potawatomi ever wants information from you, something you might want to keep in mind of how helpful they were with your study. But we did get information for most of the positions on all of, from all of these different organizations. Obviously, you're not going to have every job title. Go ahead, Carrie. You're not going to have every job title for every person. One of the things that we look at when we have the salary data is something called a comp ratio, and it's a ratio, for example, of what your step one is to the average market minimum of a similar job position, and 50% means that you're in market. Well, obviously, you're never going to get to that right number, so we do a range around it. And with the current economy, what we're saying is if the comp ratio is 45% and above, you are within market. You are okay. The position is fine. If it's less than 45%, we really need to take a look at it and determine whether or not it needs to be adjusted for the market. And what we're going to look at now is a couple of points within your salary schedule. So the first one is step one. So we looked at step one to the average market minimum of similar benchmark positions and said about 39 of your positions, 39%, excuse me, are under market. They're below that 45%. That pay range for that particular position has fallen below what an acceptable market minimum is, and we really need to look at that. But what's very encouraging is 61% of those market minimums are aligned with the average market. Now, this can be a little bit deceiving because what we don't know and what we can't capture is that your minimum might be fine, but how many, to the market, but how many of those other organizations that we looked at, are they actually using their minimum? Are they hiring higher than that minimum in order to attract employees? And we obviously can't capture that. So at least looking at just on paper, your minimum to your average minimum, you're pretty much in line with the market. Next, we're going to look at the midpoint. Salary schedules in the past have always been built on the premise that usually the midpoint or some identified point within your salary schedule represents the average market rate. The average market rate means that I should be at that rate when, usually within four to seven years, when I'm fully capable and competent of doing the job. So we assumed that step seven was that midpoint for your average market rate. And for most of your position, it is 70% of your positions, the average market rate aligned with step seven of your salary schedule. But again, we had 30% of your positions that did not align with that, and so therefore need to be adjusted if we truly want to have an average market rate point within our salary schedule. And then the last area we looked at is looking at step 14. What's the maximum? Maximals don't mean much to me because we, salary schedules are constructed so differently. Even I construct them very differently. I've got a client right now where we only have 20% from minimum to maximum, and I have another one where it's 65% from minimum to maximum. But in this case, the average earning potential of 60% of your positions are aligned with the average earning potential of the market. And last but not least, we look at incumbents because sometimes the salary schedule will tell us one thing, but how people are moving through that salary schedule tells us something different. And actually, because you have a step system, it's much easier to have people moving through that salary schedule and aligning with that, and 31% are under the market and 64% are in the market. But this one, we have to be a little bit careful about because if we went back to the very first slide and we looked at the number of people that have five years or less of tenure, I would expect to see some people in the 30% to 40% comp ratios because they're new. They're at the lower end of the salary schedule, and that's where they should be, just as much as having somebody at the upper end of the salary schedule isn't unusual either because you do have some longer tenured employees, and they have moved themselves through the range. So this is actually a very nice placement of your employees. There are a couple employees, about 5% that are in that 0 to 29% comp ratio. That's telling me these are positions that are in where the whole salary range has fallen out. So they are at the lower end of the range, but that lower end of the range is no longer competitive, and we need to take a look at it. So looking, after getting that information, now we've got the market data, what we need to look at is what's your current system? And your current system has 20 pay grades. It's a 14-step system. Steps one, two, and three are 5% apart. The rest are at 2.5%. Very common type of structure. It has 5% between each pay grades. And when I started compensation studies way back, you know, when there was horse and carriages, it was very, very easy to create salary schedules because you created your minimum and your maximum, you put 5% in between, and that was your grid. And since then, compensation has evolved a little bit beyond that, and we no longer have this strict 5% between each pay grade because what that causes is compression. There's not enough space between pay grades, and you end up having to have more pay grades to get some distance between positions. And so you've got a very compressed system with only 20 pay grades within your organization. You have a couple of positions where there's an entry level and a senior level, and they have to be in the same pay grade because there is no room to move them higher up without causing more compression problems. And one area is compression that we look at, and that's if I'm going from a position and I'm moving now to a supervisor position, is there enough incentive for me in the new pay grade to move to that supervisor position and take on those additional responsibilities? And in your case, there's a lot of overlap within those pay ranges. So if I'm taking that promotion, I'm going in the upper end of that pay band, and so we need to do something to spread that out. I will applaud you. I only have one other client that has some represented groups, and they're all on the same salary schedule. Usually, we end up having multiple salary schedules when we have representative groups, so I applaud you for being able to keep all of them on one schedule, and so, good job. You also have a variable hour and seasonal schedule. Their pay ranges really kind of differ between 31% from minimum to maximum to 48, and so we took a look at that one as well. So when we construct a new salary schedule, one of the things that I asked Carrie is, what's your compensation philosophy? Where do you want to be in the market? And there's really kind of three ways. Number one, you want to lead the market. You want to be the employer of choice, and so you're going to maybe do your salary schedule at the 60th percentile or the 70th percentile. The other option is you want to meet the market. You want to be the average. And I will tell you, after 25 years of doing this, probably 90% of municipal clients are meeting the average. We are getting some organizations, especially in the Midwest, Kansas, Missouri, where they're saying, no, we want to start leading the market and are building their schedules at the 60th or the 65th percentile. But that's just kind of starting in government. Or do we want to follow the market, which fortunately is not your compensation philosophy, but we do have some organizations where fiscally they just cannot meet the average, and so therefore, we're going to do something a little bit lower than average. So your salary schedule, next slide, is built on the average market rate. So it's not above average, it's not below average, which means people are going to find other places that pay more, and they're also going to find places that pay less. We kept the structure of the system pretty much consistent. There are 14 steps. The 14 steps are similar to what your current construction is, other than we added one more 5% step. So the difference between one, two, three, and four are 5%, and then it's 2.5% throughout the remaining steps. There is an option out there right now for pay grades 310 and above to have only 12 steps. And sometimes there's the optics of what that top end looks like when you just do the math of 5% and then 2.5% steps. And even though there's the optics there, I think we have to really keep in mind that when we have people that are coming into these types of higher professional positions, they're usually a little bit later in their career because these are higher level, more responsible type positions, and we really need to make sure we have a nice pay band for them. Now, the probability that a brand-new department director is going to stay there for 14 years may not occur, but. So I did build the system so that all of the pay grades have 14 steps. You'll see there are some shaded out, and that's 13 and 14, so that there would only be 12 steps if that's something that you want to do. The percentage between pay grades varies. It could be 8%, it could be 10%, it could be 5%. Again, we're looking at that compression piece throughout the hierarchy of the schedule. We did update the variable hours and seasonal schedule and tied those positions really closely aligned with their full-time counterparts. And then we did create a salary range for your elected department heads. That salary range was built off of two data points. Number one is what's the average person making in those positions, because a lot of elected positions do not have salary ranges, and so therefore, we're looking at exactly what the incumbents are making and what the average is. And then, probably more important is compression. Who is the next, who's the highest person that they're supervising, and making sure that there's very minimal overlap between that highest appointed position and the elected position? Once we have this schedule built, we now have to place positions in it, and we base positions based on four different factors. It's not just one thing. So a lot of times people will say, well, wait a second. I know this position pays more or less over there. Why am I in this pay grade? Well, the first thing we look at is the position analysis. Remember a long time ago, I told you employees filled out a position questionnaire that turns into a point factor system? That point factor has a total then for each position. We then group positions with similar point totals together to say, okay, these have similar qualities, similar responsibilities, similar education, training, and so therefore, they should be grouped together. However, we may split them apart into different pay grades because the second component is the market. What's the market telling me? So I may put a position in a pay grade A, and I put one in B because the B, the minimum, and that average market rate better align with that position than just the points. The third thing we look at is compression. So if I'm going to move from a level one, level two, level three to a supervisor, how much overlap do we have within those salary ranges? There is some overlap, and so you may have a very long-tenured employee make more than a brand-new supervisor for a couple of years, but at some point in time, that supervisor's salary range needs to be higher than the subordinate that they are working with. So that's the third thing. And the last thing is internal comparability. Where do we want to have these positions aligned? So I'm going to give you an example, your department heads. Most of your department heads are kind of grouped together. If I looked at points, market, and compression, I might have them in separate pay grades. But for your organization, it makes more sense that have those department heads all within similar pay grades. So that's kind of your internal comparability piece that we need to look at. So now we've placed the positions, and now we have to place the employees. And what we do is very simple. It's okay. I'm going to take a look at what that employee's making, and that employee's in pay grade 310, and I'm going to put them in the box, the step that's closest to what their current pay is without a pay decrease. Some reason pay decreases just don't sell very well. That means I could get a nice increase, or I could get two cents because I'm making $14.98, and the step closest to what I'm currently making without a pay decrease is $15, and I'm putting you in the box. I am not putting you in based upon your years of service because everybody has this idea, if you have 14 steps, that number equates to years of service, and it doesn't. That's all that number is, is identifying what that step is. So I'm not going to say if you've been here for 10 years, you're going to go on step 10. Number one, you couldn't afford it, but number two, that's not the way the schedule is designed. So we can cause something called in-range compression where we have longer-tenured employees that are at or below that market rate, which is step six in your schedule. And that's something you may want to take a look at and say, you know what, they've been here for 10 years, and they're not at the market rate, which is step six. We want to get them to at least step six or step seven because of that. Now, this entire schedule is built off of 2025 data, and so therefore, my understanding is that you're looking at implementation for this in 2026, so it is going to have to be trended up based on some sort of economic factor for 2026. To be really honest with you right now, I don't know what that should look like. We're going to have to take a better handle on what the economy is doing, you know, this summer, early fall, to know what to trend that salary schedule up to. And then, yep, thank you. And then, obviously, you're going to have to manage the schedule, and you've been doing a very good job of that. That showed in the data at the beginning, and that means annually, you need to increase that salary schedule to some sort of economic indicator. I say pick one and stick with it, but you have to keep the health of the schedule. You just spent a lot of money, you know, making sure your schedule is maintained, and if you keep it up, if you do these course corrections on a regular basis, you're all of a sudden not going to find yourself significantly far behind to the market. And then obviously, you have your step movement on a regular basis, and that's controlled by your current policies, and we're not recommending you change anything at this point in time. So last but not least, this was not the only thing we talked about, but the other things we talked about are much more long-term. There are things that are going to have to be looked at and evaluated as to whether they make sense for your organization. So other things that we looked at and have made some recommendations for on certification pay, on-call pay, pay differentials, special assignment pay, hiring or referral programs. We did collect data from surrounding organizations and then made some recommendations to that. Some things are going to require a little bit more work on the part of the county before they can implement them, because, for example, certification pay, you're going to have to identify what certification pay is required for the job. You're not going to incent somebody for that. That's already been taken into account by how the pay grade was developed, but are there other certifications that would be beneficial to not only the employee but the county, and then what the value of that is? So there's a little work that has to go into that if you want to walk down that road. The other thing we did is we looked at benefits. We are not benefits brokers, so this is information for Carrie to take to the insurance carriers. Some of the things that we recommended, the county has tried already, and, you know, again, doesn't mean that another year, two years, it might resurface and actually be a benefit, but we did look at health insurance and where does the county lie in relationship to its comparables, time-off benefits, and other total reward opportunities, because compensation is just one part of the picture. So I think I'm going to stop talking now, and I will answer any questions that anybody has at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McGrath. Before we do questions, we open it up for public comment. Public sometimes can lead to additional questions for the commission, so is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this presentation? All right. Nobody rushing to speak up, so we'll move on then to commission questions. Maybe Carrie, do you have something to add first?
I would just say, overall, this has been a pleasure to work with Dr. McGrath and our team. They've done an outstanding job. I appreciate everything that the employees have done and who have been asked to complete those position questionnaires, and the time and effort department heads have put into this process as well. Obviously, this is a report from Dr. McGrath about the study's findings. Any type of decisions about what the commission may want to consider for implementation would come later in the process, of course.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kipli.
I can ask just if Dr. McGrath has anything that's, was particularly unique to Minnai County or maybe our area of greatest need, maybe across categories like getting people in the door so that minimum, or do we have a specific problem with people topping out our maximum or some retention issue in between?
Good question. Actually, I think your system overall is well done. I think the biggest issue is the compression within the pay grades. And as a result of that, you're going to see that a lot, once we get higher within the salary range, all of a sudden, those salaries kind of pop up a little bit more than you would anticipate, and that's because we're spreading out that salary range from minimum, you know, the lower-level pay grades to the higher pay grades. And I think we now have some nice space between those that's going to hopefully help retention and want to have people promote into those positions because there's now a place to do that. And I'm not sure you had a promotion problem to begin with, but I know especially with your attorneys, you know, you were really scrunch together with those attorneys, and I think we now have some very nice competitive salaries that are going to get them in the door as well as some nice hierarchy and nice steps in between to do that. So I think that was the one that kind of stands out. But overall, Carrie has done a phenomenal job of keeping your system up to date and working.
Dr. McGrath, question on my mind, right now, if you looked at a bell graph, basically, you don't have one presented, but we have a lot of employees new and a lot of employees old, so we kind of got the peaks on the end and not the middle. Is it possible or even desirable to level that out? I mean, what do you see? Are we different in how our employee spread is?
No, and I would say you probably have a better bell curve than I usually see. Usually, I see very lopsided ones with a good portion of the employees very, very new and another huge group that's going to be walking out the door, and you've got a nice mix of folks in the middle. So I think what you're going to need to make sure you do, though, is you've got this nice group in the middle, and what are they going to do to make sure that we're training and getting those, that younger group, at least tenure, younger group, ready to take those positions as they start transitioning out of the organization? So, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I think you've got a very nice, you've got a very nice subset of generations within your organization. So there's nothing I see that would have to be changed or managed. You might need to look at where those folks are placed within those pay ranges so that those folks that are, have been with the organization are longer, at least at step six or above, in order to make sure that they're at or above the average market rate. I hope that answered your question.
Because step six is average, so that's, yeah, I get that. Okay?
Yeah.
Commissioners, other questions? All right, very detailed and long time in coming and a lot of work put into it. And today is a presentation, we are not taking action on it, that will come down the road. But appreciate your help and I'm sure that if we have questions, that we know how to get hold of you.
Kerry knows where I live, so thank you very much for the opportunity. I'll, I'll pop off and let you guys solve all the problems of the county. So have a really good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on then. We are going to consider a resolution for a burn ban in Minnehaw County. Mr. Gierman from Emergency Management here. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Jason Gierman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. Here today to consider a resolution for a burn ban in Minnehaw County. As you all know, the lack of snow we've had this past winter has really caused some dry conditions, a lot of brown grass out there, very little spring rain right now, although we're seeing some moisture come into the area here, hopefully through this week and maybe this weekend. So on March 20th, the National Weather Service issued a red flag warning, which was last week and through the weekend with the high winds. So, you know, with the discussion with the, the president of the Fire Chiefs Association, who is here right now, if you have questions for him, we thought it was a good idea to, you know, propose this burn ban.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission questions? Mr. Kipling.
Thank you. I, I think this is the first one in my couple of years. Do you recall the last time we've put?
Talking with Sandy, I think it was 21, year 2021.
Okay.
And, and one thing I'd like to add, normally, you know, when we do this, there's, it's tough to put an end date on it, but I don't know if a motion needs to be done to, to maybe have the commission chair or the liaison for fire to, to decide when the burn ban should end. Otherwise, we'd have to come back in another commission session to, to, to do the end. I think that's what we've done in the past.
Commissioner Benega?
Exactly what I was going to ask is if we set a date or let the Minnehaw County Director of Emergency Management along with the rural fire departments make that decision, which can change quickly, but frankly, that's their skill level and I think that we ought to let them make that discussion happen.
I would rely heavily on the fire departments to make that decision and, you know, what they recommend. You know, until we get some significant rain or things start to green up, we're going to have some issues.
So the way it's written, we don't have an end date on it, but you're suggesting, and I don't know if this is permissible and may have to look for legal advice on this, that the liaison and the chair be given the authority to lift it on the recommendation of?
In the past, we've made a motion to do that. Somebody made a motion to do that. So I don't know if that's appropriate.
It had to come back as a separate action.
Otherwise, I think it has to come back if you don't make that motion. You could correct me on that if legal has an opinion.
Okay. Don't mean to put you on the spot, Eric, but, um, okay.
Chair, Eric Bog, Deputy State's Attorney. Jason and I have had this conversation. There's several different schools of thoughts about how to enact a burn ban in the first place and how one can be rescinded. Statutorily, I'm less concerned with authorizing the chair or liaison or even Jason himself in consultation with other folks to lift one than I am to allow someone other than the five of you to impose one. So I certainly can craft that amendment to the proposed draft that you have in front of you before you sign it today, if that's the motion from the board today. So it's up to you.
Okay. So no problem with the lifting, it's the imposing, is what you're telling us, okay? Other commission, Commissioner Weinberg?
Thank you. How have we noticed this in the past and what are we required to do or do we have a plan to share this information with the average resident who maybe isn't watching our meeting?
Generally, I put out some sort of press release, word of mouth through the fire departments. And it is kind of interesting, I do get phone calls from people asking, hey, is there a burn ban? Especially when the dry conditions are out or they see that red flag warning. So, you know, the public has become more aware of it and, you know, they get calls through Metro, they're supposed to call in, nothing legally they have to do, but they call in for, for a burn to, to do a, a controlled burn, so fire's aware of it. You know, it's a popular time to burn brush piles, ditches, that time of year, so, you know, we're looking to just keep control of that until weather conditions change.
Thank you. And then if I could ask one more question?
Please.
Can you tell me a little bit more about what kind of containers are sufficient to prohibit the escape of burning substances, sparks, flames or hot ashes?
There's got to be an enclosed container, cover on it of some sort, I usually, I think they mesh cover. It's kind of a, it's kind of a broad type thing, so I mean, I think a careless, a careless burn is the problem if you're trying to control it and, and do the right thing, you know, fire pits, things like that in backyards, you know. I don't think we're looking at banning that, but, you know, you need to be careful and have water available. You know, and maybe Chief Harstead could get up here and, you know, kind of explain some of the things that they've dealt with throughout the years with the burning issues if you have any questions for him.
Thank you.
I guess my concern, I know burning is definitely a tool, method used by a lot of property owners, as you said, to control weeds. I mean, is a day with no wind, yeah, it's dry, but I mean, it'd be a great day to burn that slew, that field, that ditch, whatever, and now we have a burn ban and we're taking that tool away. Is there a way that this can be, I mean, do they have to get permission from anybody to do that during a burn ban? Is there?
A burn ban is no burning within the county, not within city limits or incorporated cities within the, within the county. So no burning unless it's that enclosed fire pit or burned barrel of some sort with some kind of lid on it. Keep the embers from flying away.
Mr. Chair, maybe I could ask Chief Harstead to maybe give us some description of the burden that the, these types of fires can place on our rural fire departments and that can weigh into our decision?
Sure. Good morning, Mike Harstead, Fire Chief in Crooks, also President of the Minnehaw County Fire Chiefs Association. Just some, some, a sampling of, of information just from this month. As, as Mr. Gierman stated, it's been very, very dry. So I had Metro poll numbers this morning, in the month of, of March, which we are only to the 25th day of, there had been 32 grass fires in the county. Of that, 17 of them, so Mr. Gierman also stated that, you know, we have done a wonderful job in the county educating people about calling in controlled burns. I'm going to burn a tree pile today, you know, and they call into Metro Communications, the non-emergent number, and they report where it is and what they're burning and the length of time that they're burning. That has helped significantly, you know, with the interstate area that we have in our county. You would not believe the number of, of reports for a fire that we get because somebody drove by on the interstate and saw smoke. And they feel great about themselves because they called it in and they're helping. Well, it's somebody that's burning up a slew or a ditch or a pile of trees or whatever else. So we've worked really, really hard with, especially the rural residents of the county about calling in those things because then Metro, when that call comes in from somebody driving by, they can say, hey, we've got a controlled burn in this location, we're not going to dispatch the fire department. So in, in 17 instances this, this month, we've gotten called to somebody that started a controlled burn, whether it's their brush pile or their ditches or whatever, and lost control of it. Okay? So almost half of the, or just over half of the, of the grass fires that we've responded to were intentionally set by somebody burning whatever and they can't control it anymore. Of those 17, nine of them were done on days that already had a red flag warning in place. So red flag warning is only in effect when the humidity is, is very low and the wind speeds are very high, combined with our dry foliage and everything else. So we just felt that it's, it's time to put a burn ban in place. Hopefully it's for a short period of time. We need some moisture, everybody knows that. And things will change drastically once fields get planted. Once the ground is turned over, the, the danger goes down exponentially. But in, in where we're at right now, I have seen a few people out doing some field work, but the vast majority haven't even begun that process yet. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a burden on the rural fire departments right now when we're averaging a couple a day across the county, so.
This burn ban wouldn't apply just during red flag warnings, it would be?
No, this would be no burning until it's lifted.
Okay. Commissioner, we have a few suggestions for action here. I'll give it to you for recommendations.
Well, Mr. Chair, I can lead us off. I think we need to put this in place. I think we've had some conversations about trying to look at, I think that was actually during the fire and EMS presentation a couple of weeks back of, are there other mechanisms to, to create an automatic trigger? I know we're getting some advice from the state's attorney on the best process for initiating these. And maybe there's more flexibility with rescinding. But I think, all that said, I think the context we're getting is that we need to give our firefighters a break at least and try to, I, I don't know if this is, I don't know that we're setting a date certain on this, but I think it'd be nice to at least have this in place for a week that we would get back together and we could have further discussion, get some further feedback at our first meeting in April. Or if we get a big rainstorm, we could always put a, a clause in here to give the chair the authority to, we could delegate that power to the chair to rescind it upon consultation with fire chiefs and Mr. Gierman, et cetera. So I, I just think bringing this to our attention and having some dialogue about it so that we're building some institutional knowledge on how to best approach these issues is helpful. So I see we have a draft resolution in our packet and from the, Mr. Bog, would we just look to amend that resolution, to add in a sentence granting the ability for the chair to?
I'd prefer the chair and the liaison, if you don't mind.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to consult with you, Dean. Yeah, and then the two of us is also in consultation with our, our friends in the industry, if you will. So would that be a motion to amend or how, how do you want to, us to proceed? Because we have a resolution in front of us.
That's true.
Please.
Thank you. Eric Bog, State's Attorney's Office. Yes, Commissioner, I, I would suggest that since you have one presented and it was part of the agenda packet that you make a motion to amend that so it's clear on the record what you're changing and then adopt it in whatever form that you want at that point.
So we've got language that based on these recommendations, a fire danger emergency is hereby declared and all open burning as defined in ordinance is hereby prohibited within the boundaries of Minnehaw County, exclusive of incorporated municipalities. And then we would just want to add a clause to that stating that, and this may be rescinded by the chair of the commission in consultation with the rural fire chiefs liaison at any time?
Commissioner, yes, I, I would suggest that you actually create a, another, be it further resolved.
Okay.
Above the emergency clause, it would say you delegate to the chair and to either emergency manager or to liaison in consultation with whoever you wish to add to that list.
Okay.
And then I, I can put that in final form for you for signature for the chair after the meeting.
Okay.
May I, Commissioner?
Yep.
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that it be the liaison, the emergency manager and the chair, that that be lifted upon consultation between the three.
Okay. I will make that. Our motion is to amend the resolution to add a further section that be it further resolved that this resolution can be rescinded by the chair of the county commission, the rural fire, rural fire.
Emergency manager.
And the emergency manager, so those are three individuals. So then when there's the consensus among them to rescind. And then obviously, this wouldn't go into the text of the resolution, but obviously the five of us at our next meeting could also rescind it. So we can find a way. So this is not a, a permanent burn, burn ban.
So we have a motion to amend the proposed resolution. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second on the amendment. So I'm looking for a voice vote on this. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, so now we have before us an amended resolution. And I do have a question on the resolution. I'm imagining this is a misdemeanor with a fine if you, violation, is that correct?
I'm not sure what the fine is, if anything would be imposed, but I know it gives some, it may give some power.
Two years in jail?
The fire department.
$200, okay.
It may give some power to the fire departments to maybe, you know, civilly, but I'm not sure on that. So that's something I can get back to you on.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind, just email would be good. All right. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
I'll second that with a comment if I could.
All right, please.
That we are all very aware of the budget issues that the fire departments are facing and so I feel like this is just a good way to partner as citizens and as the commission to help alleviate some of those expenses.
Agreed, because we are pulling people away from their jobs in these volunteer fire departments to respond, so 100% agreed.
When there is a brush fire in the rural areas, you get quite a response, so it's, it's a big drain.
All right. Additional comments? Call the roll.
I do have, Mr. Chair, one question actually. How have these burn bans historically been enforced? Is it the sheriff's office or the, in consultation with the fire departments or what does that look like on the ground when, if someone breaks this ordinance?
Maybe Fire Chief can attend to that, but personally, I have not seen or heard of any fines or anything against people for burning it. Usually pretty, people are pretty good about abiding by it, so. I, I know the sheriff's office has maybe responded to a couple, but I don't know personally if tickets were issued or anything like that. That's something I would have to research too, but maybe Mike could help out with that.
Well, in the past, when we've had burn bans in place, the, the sheriff's office can ticket, there's a $200 fine associated with it. Typically, unless there has been property damage or anything like that, I don't know that we've ever actually had a ticket issued. But it usually ends up in a stern talking to.
We rely on our partners in the media to make sure that this is, yeah.
And the, the great thing is, like I said, with all the education that we've done, people, people really do call into that non-emergent number. And when the folks at Metro Communications can say, please be aware that there's a burn ban in place, that, that is a, a really big deterrent. It, it really does work.
Excellent. All right, call the roll.
Kipling?
Aye.
Weinberg?
Aye.
Hazy?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hersky?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to Minnehaw Conservation District presentation, John Parker. There he is.
Yeah, I mean that, that tree video, we'll just do that at the end.
What was that?
The video. We'll just do that at the end.
So, thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, thanks for the invite and opportunity to come down and just broadcast our work and purposes and information and available to the public. Even though we're the Minnehaw Conservation District, we're still an entity of the state and also of the county, so we- of the county. So we operate underneath everybody's umbrella. So we're in, in between there. So, um, a couple of things on the, the conservation connection. If you guys all received that, that's our yearly, uh, news publication newsletter, gives up the accomplishments and stuff we've done throughout the year and all that. So if the people in the audience here didn't get one, I've got a few left. They can, uh, get one before the meeting's over or something. So, and that goes through, uh, listing everything that we've done through the year. And, uh, we can just scroll down here a little bit. Not too much. And, uh, and there's just approximations of the stuff we've done. We, uh, planted 57 acres of trees last year. Um, we do a survival count in August on those. Uh, that was for 92% survivability, which was tremendous by the producers to, uh, keep them alive being as the last two years have been really tough on watering and no rain from mother nature. So they gotta water and keep them alive. So, um, on that one. We had about 80 producers, uh, participated in grass seeding and covered about 3,100 acres. Um, we planted and sold about 18,479 bare root trees last year to 307 customers throughout Minnehaw County in the surrounding area. Cause there's a, always a little overlap from some of the adjoining counties. So, so that goes there. Um, we worked with the city of Sioux Falls, variable projects, um, with their biosalts dispersal and, uh, other projects, pollinators and, uh, garden spaces. Um, our outreach consists of, um, all, all kinds of people that we work for. I won't read it off. Everybody else, everybody can read that. So, um, educational, um, the biggest one there is the Sioux Empire Water Festival. This was our 31st year last year. We completed the 32nd year already. Um, in those 32 years, we've contacted about 72 to 73,000 students, fourth graders in the area. So, and I think Commissioner Blainberg has been involved and so has Commissioner Heisey. They've both been there. So they've, they've been involved and seen the chaos for two days. This year we had 25, 2,500 fourth graders in two days on the campus of USF. So, and we had over a hundred, I think it was a hundred volunteers between, uh, various partners and FSA and NRCS and the conservation districts and everybody else that's involved. So it's quite, uh, quite deeply involved on everything that goes on. So, and then, uh, I think on there, there is a tree order form in there. If you are listening to this meeting today or here today and you want to order trees, you still can. The date on there is March 7th was the cutoff date, but we can still get some trees. So if you do, just say on the order form or the call that you were listening to the county commission meeting, then we can still get some trees through Friday. Cause our shipments start coming in next week. So you have to get them ordered from the nursery before they get here. So. Anybody, any questions?
Is that your presentations or, or do you have more?
No, I got some more yet.
Okay, go ahead.
And then some of our national outreach that we've done, um, like last year, the pheasant fest was in town. We participated in that. And then, uh, several other ones, grasslands committee and stuff. And, uh, we, uh, did some outreach. We've had some urban, had a urban grant with NRCS and, uh, the city of Sioux Falls. And we created the square, we call it. And, uh, it's really an urban garden. It's down off of 72nd street, past our tree shed. And this year we'll have the high tunnel up and running and some various gardens and stuff. So we'll have more information on that. Cole can get more at, Commissioner Heisey can get more at the meeting and bring it to you guys. So that'll work out. Apologize for my voice. It's, uh, I got a half a sinus infection or something and it's varies in and out. So, and then, uh, the Big Sioux Prodigy River Project, that's a, a large project too. Um, the buffer, the Skunk Creek and all the tributaries and, uh, the Big Sioux River. And that's in conjunction with NRCS, city of Sioux Falls. And, uh, there again, it covers all the way up, way north of Brookings, all the way down to the Nebraska border. Sorry. So basically on that. And what else we got on there? And here's the part that we're working with the city on the infrastructure improvement continuing. This was the part over here on Coveville there that they, um, had purchased this area because of the flooding area. Um, so in turn they've been doing some project work there to, uh, try to install some rain garden, um, nature, native grasses and a kind of a walking trail and thing in areas. So we're in the process of working with the city on that. And then the Geving site, um, out there, this is the birding, uh, group that was there from, uh, uh, the Audubon Society in that they organized it. They used the facility and everything. And, uh, I just told Commissioner Heisey this morning that, uh, the last week of May or last week of April and the first week of May, we plan on burning the native grass out there, but we'll probably put that on hold now. So. But, but we were, we were at, uh, fire training last week in, uh, Yankton last Thursday. And, uh, that was one of the things that we talked about down there that if there is a burn ban, that, that takes precedence over everything. So, but, and there's our, our contact stuff, Minnehaw Conservation District. We're up on 2408 D Spenson Road and I'm John Parker, district manager. And then we started a new venture, um, a couple of years ago, shelter belt cleaning out. And, uh, we don't remove the trees like physically going and cut them out and stuff, but we do trim them up and clean them up. And here's a couple of pictures. Um, that was a before. This is the same shelter belt, one row taken inside. And, you know, this, this one here is, uh, 19 years old, this shelter belt. And the producer had done work up to about year 10. And then since then, he's just kinda let it go. But he wanted to get back to, now he's retired. Wanted to be able to walk his dog and throw him, play fetch and stuff in there. And so we got it all cleaned up for him. And we did four of them this winter. And I think we got four or five lined up for next winter to do. So, in there. And there's some more. This is another one. And that's another one there that we clean up. And we just prune and clean up all the rows and everything in between and, uh, try to go in there. So, yeah. So, any questions? And then at the end there, we can play that video if anybody doesn't, has any questions or?
Play the video. Nothing quite as fun as watching toys at work.
Oth- other than running them.
Yeah. All right. Public, huh? Do we have public comment on this, um, presentation? All right. Commissioner, questions, comments? Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you. I just could make a comment that, um, I had the opportunity to be the liaison for the conservation district for several years. And then also, um, we've been customers of the conservation district. So I, um, have seen it from both perspectives and can just give a little, um, thank you for the quality work that you do and the reputation that you have throughout the county and the work that you do to help maintain those groves, um, those shelter belts and the grasslands, the native lands. I'm not very familiar with what you do in the city, but I know from sitting in meetings that, um, there's quite a bit of engagement there in cities too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heisey, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chair. Just got a comment. I, I enjoyed that video. I think, I don't know if you need a license to operate that piece of machinery, but give me a call next time you're out. And I work for free. That was like a lot of fun. Um, I just wanted to comment that, uh, you know, very happy that, uh, I'm now your liaison and I really enjoyed, you know, meeting your staff and, you know, seeing your facilities and, I mean, just a wide range of activities and projects that you're involved with. And it's been, um, really interesting learning experience and look forward to, um, continuing to, uh, develop that relationship. So thank you for all you do.
Yep. Thank you guys too. Thanks.
I guess I was unaware, John, that, you know, looking at this order form, is this available to any citizen in Minnehaw County that can order or?
Yeah.
Okay, no?
Yeah. Anybody, um, the majority, we send out about 11,000 newsletters, but the majority of them go to the rural postal routes. So if you're inner city, even in Hartford or Brandon or something, you probably did not see that, you know, because their routes all, everybody's differs, you know? And then, uh, but yeah, anybody can order and, uh, you know, it's, the trees are all bare root. There's nothing container. We can get some bigger ones, but most people just use the bare root. So.
All righty.
Yeah.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right. Moving on, auditor's office, annual presentation.
So what did I just do? Well, good morning. Leah Anderson, Auditor's Office, um, Minnehaw County. And I just wanna scroll through. Okay, there we go. All right. Well, um, the Auditor's Office has quite a variety of responsibilities and, um, we are likely the most, I think we're almost the most diverse department in the county as far as responsibilities. I've listed some of those here. Our department is responsible for many of the accounting functions, uh, the document management, uh, our, uh, we clerk and record meeting minutes. We make sure property tax funds are allocated to different entities. We facilitate the budget process, record and make debt payments, oversee grants and conduct elections. First we'll look at accounting management. Um, most of our staff work in various accounting roles. We have six employees that are part of our accounting team, not including our budget and finance officer and our property tax administrator who are also both accountants. Our accounting team handles accounts payable, liens, payroll. We track capital assets. We distribute funds, reconcile accounts and administer the purchasing cards or the credit cards. All of the outgoing bills for the county are, um, or the payments for those bills are generated from our office. And as you can see by the graph, um, the level of activity has increased over each year. In 2024, our average, average vouchers or payments that we issued, this is just the number of, were 2,810 per month. And we issued 33,716 in 2024. So you can see there that that growth just continues. Also with accounts payable, um, this is just a look at the number of 1099s. So a little explanation on this. Um, the reason this difference, um, in the beginning of 2021, the county received funds through South Dakota Cares to assist individuals with rent. This meant that we were paying new vendors and, uh, for, for the rent assistance. And so South, the South Dakota Cares program ended in January of '24. So that number of 1099s began to decrease. So you can just see kind of a little bit of a up and then down motion there as those payments decreased. Also in our accounting department, we handle, uh, a lot of the, we handle liens, recording the liens, um, and then also the payments on those liens. Um, liens were impacted also by the South Dakota Cares program. The county aid liens, as you can see, there's a decrease in those county aid liens because those that were receiving assistance through South Dakota Cares did not have a lien placed against them. So you can see that in 2021, we placed 1,745 liens for county aid. And in 2024, that number decreased to 332. The liens for our attorney fees, um, also needs a little bit of an explanation. You can see that really large amount in 2021. Um, this was before my term, but in discussing with staff. So in going from 2020 to 2021, the recording of liens was quite far behind. And so in '21, there were a lot of liens recorded for attorney fees, um, in comparison to the next three years after that. We've tried to maintain that, uh, work and stay caught up. Um, but that's why 2021 is so much higher. Um, we also, I guess in regards to the liens, uh, we are sometimes at a bit of feast or famine. So we will get several months at a time from either public defenders or public advocates. We were quite behind with public advocate recently. And then they brought down five months of liens. And so we've had a couple of meetings with them and I think we're on a good track now to stay caught up with them, um, as long as they keep getting those, all of that paperwork to us. Another interesting trend is lien recovery payments. And, uh, the chart on the right shows a little bit of that activity. So as, um, as the housing market is desirable, we do see an increase in payments on liens. As that market is less desirable, which it is right now, then those payments are lower. And the reason being is because a person would have to get their lien paid before they can close on property. Uh, another accounting function that we do is our payroll administration. Um, so I think that's, uh, probably the most important aspect to everybody that we have here because everybody wants to get paid. Um, we have about 690 employees currently, but our payroll accountant not only makes sure that all of those employees are paid, she also does the tax reporting, reconciles, um, does the payroll liabilities and issues the 1099s at the end of the year. So a couple of things to note here, um, I've got a chart just of personnel cost. That chart, uh, personnel costs have consents, consistently trended upward. The costs represent more than just gross payroll. So that cost is, um, the matching taxes, the gross payroll, health insurance, retirement benefits, workers' compensation insurance and other employee costs that go into that. So that's the total of what it costs to maintain our, our staff here. On the other, uh, chart to the right is our W2s that have been issued. Um, with the, um, average number of employees. So you'll see in '24, our W2s have increased. Um, a reason for that is that our election workers that were receiving $600 or more in pay, we had to issue them a 109, or I'm sorry, a W2. Uh, there was a little confusion on that during the year and we got that all figured out. But election workers are a unique, uh, animal in the IRS guidelines. And that is that they get a W2 if they're $600 or more, but we do not take taxes out until they hit $2,000. And we don't expect anyone to hit that $2,000 mark, but we did have people that hit the $600 mark. I have a lot to get through, so my mouth gets dry, but sorry about that. So, um, also in the accounting section, we have our capital asset. So also in the accounting section, we have our capital asset and reconciliation and the P-cards that happen. So we have Rhonda, who's our capital asset accountant, and then Renee, who's the accounting manager. They work pretty close along with Susan as the Budget and Finance Officer. But some of the functions that are included for that section is the tracking of capital assets, preparing financial statements, reconciling accounts, calculating and recording insurance costs, making journal entries, and calculating pass-through funds. Our department spends a great deal of time taking in money and sending it out for various entities such as state, cities, schools, and townships. So a lot of our time is spent just moving money back and forth. So this'll, this slide is to talk about our document management. So our Commission Recorder, who you are all very familiar with, she has a lot of duties besides attending meetings, taking minutes, and clerking the meetings. She does the, in addition, she is present for bid openings and records the bids, processes our various liquor licenses, schedules legal publications, tracks and electronically files the minutes, resolutions and ordinances, and manages the public record request. Many of her duties are fairly consistent during the year. However, this slide will show you that the one area that has seen an increase continually has been the public records request. One of the reasons is just we've had more requests, so it's just a normal part of, of life. But also because the requests for the Sheriff's Department are now running through the Gisfoya system, and so that also is giving us a higher trend in our public records requests. Another large area that our office handles is the Property Tax Administration. And we have a Property Tax Accountant that handles this area. She is responsible for completing all property tax calculations and reports for the county taxing entities such as schools, cities, townships, and the county. And she submits that information to the Department of Revenue to ensure compliance with state law. She also communicates quite often with the citizens and the title companies. She is responsible for abatement calculations, adjustments, and the flow of abatements. You can see by this chart here that abatements have also trended upwards, so she is quite busy with those. In this particular slide, I also included where we're at currently for 2025, and this was as of the 19th. But in, probably each day, she's handling more abatements. So I believe at this point in time, she has already hit where we were in 2023 with abatements that, just in the first three months of this year. Another, one other, I had a quick conversation with Jean before I came up here. So another interesting fact for her position is that we paid, or we sent out 75,277 tax statements, and that equated to 400,151,921 in total property tax dollars that were billed out. But the county would retain 77,416 of that, which is 19%. So I know a lot of times when we talk about property taxes, people think that the county gets all that money, and we don't. We only get to keep about 19% of that money. So the next area, Budget and Finance Management. So our Budget and Finance Officer, you are very familiar with her because she gets to spend a lot of time keeping you up to date in that area. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time in this section, but she is responsible for helping with the annual audit, the financial reports, the budget process, supplements to budget, and grant management, and assistance to other departments. Our department also is the Election Management Department. So election management is also a topic that you're familiar with, and many think of elections as being a small portion of responsibility for our department. Even in a year when we do not have a primary or general election, our office remains busy with election-related responsibilities. In even years, we conduct the primary and the general elections, but as we saw in '24, we also played a large role in assisting with the City of Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls School District elections. So we conducted a total of four elections in 2024. Every year, we support and assist with municipal and school district elections. We also maintain precinct boundaries and review those boundaries annually. In odd years, we are responsible for doing voter registration list maintenance. And then on a daily basis, we are assisting citizens with voter registrations and absentee requests. I have a slide here that just lists out what we have coming up for '25 elections. This is good for the public to know. As of yesterday, at 5:00 PM, we went into a voter registration freeze for the entities that are listed here for the April 8th, 2025 elections. So we have the Lennox School District, Garrettson School District, City of Crooks, City of Brandon, City of Colton, City of Dell Rapids. So if anybody is in that area and they needed to make a change to their voter registration, that deadline was last night. Coming up, May 13th, we have the Sioux Falls School election, and the voter registration deadline for that one is April 28th at 5:00 PM. And then absentee will begin also on the 28th. For that election, the county, we will be conducting their absentee process, balloting process. So people will be coming to the county building to cast votes if they want to vote absentee in person for that election. We are going to do that down at our office and not have it upstairs because we don't expect as large of a turnout for that. Another area in talking about elections is just a trend of voter registration. So as you can see, our voter registration has grown over the years. I went back to December of 2020, and we've added just over, right around 12,000 extra registered voters. As you can see, as that line goes, has the downward peaks, that's when we're doing that list maintenance process. And so anytime we're doing that maintenance process, we will have a decrease in then a number of registered voters for active status. Those voters just go into an inactive status most likely. And so this line is just indicating active. One other slide I have here regarding elections. I feel that we made great headway in the 100th legislative session regarding some of the election legislation and concerns that I had had with our residency and providing a federal ballot for those who did not meet the residency requirements. So in our state, we never had that option, and we should have that option legally for anyone that doesn't meet those requirements to be able to vote a federal ballot. So HB 1066 and 1208 that are listed here take care of those two items, the residency and the federal ballot. Those are getting signed by the governor today at 2:00. I've also listed some other bills for your review. I'm not going to go through each and every one unless you have questions. But one I'd also like to touch on is HB 1130, and that is the bill that provides for permissible dates for municipal and school elections. And that bill is tentatively also supposed to be signed today, and that would have a bit of a change in how we do elections here because we would be adding any municipal and school election in with our primary or general election. So I did a little bit of work yesterday, created a spreadsheet, and of our 80 precincts that we have currently, 49 would not really have an impact by this change. They would still be in the Sioux Falls School District and the City of Sioux Falls only, so we wouldn't have multiple ballots that they would have to get. 11 precincts would have minor impact, meaning that they might have two different ballots, ballot options. We had, I also looked at the other end of which ones would have the most options, and the most would be six options, and that would be for VP 9, VP 10, and VP 13. That would only depend on if every school district and every municipality had an election at the same time. Usually that doesn't happen. The nice thing is with, with us using precincts, that's a benefit going into this 1130 because we already are used to looking at those ballot splits for each precinct. Another good thing with going into this for us would be that we can, we can also look at precinct boundaries again next year and see if we need to make any additional changes for that. Let's see. In the coming months, I hope that we'll get some more direction on all of this legislation. Currently, it's, it's pretty new territory, and we're not really sure what direction we'll be going in for much of this, but that'll all get worked out in the coming months. The next slide that I have here is department goals. And these are really, so when we do our evaluations with each employee, we look at what are goals that we want to set with each employee. So these are my goals, since I don't get an evaluation except I get to present to you. Cross-training. So I've already started learning different areas of our office. This is a slow year for us. In '23, when I came on, I came in in March, and we went right into working on precinct boundaries, and it was kind of just like drinking out of a fire hose. And so in '25, I hope that I will have plenty of time to sit down and get cross-trained in other areas. The Commission Recorder position, and then another focus of mine will be with our Property Tax Administration and learning that process because that is an area that I was not as familiar with. We are also going to work on some team building through doing some personality assessments within our own department and seeing if we can develop better relationships with each other. We're going to review our, and I've already started this one too, reviewing our absentee ballot process. I've been communicating with the State's Attorney's Office, other similar-sized counties, the SOS Office, and our supervisors to see what changes can we make legally and how could we improve that process. Assessment of our election supplies and equipment. You'll see coming up next week when we do our carryover supplements that I have some items that we would like to include in our budget with our carryover. And then assessment of our election storage space. Currently, things are pretty spread out for us, and so we would really like to have a more centralized storage area. And assessment of our historical documents. So in our main vault room that we call it, or our storage room in our office, a lot of space is being taken up by historical documents, and I'm going to be looking into how could we scan and then maybe store those in a different area. Before I break for questions, one thing I would like to close with. So when I began my term as auditor, I feel my staff was a little uneasy about me coming in because they had heard false rumors that I was not going to, you know, keep their positions or keep them in their positions. And I just want to say that was false, and I'm thankful to each and every one of my staff for giving me a chance to prove that I truly want a good working relationship with them. We have had only one change in staffing since I've been there, and I'm thankful for the relationships that we've been able to build, and I look forward to a year of growth in our department. So I'll stand by for any questions.
All right. Before we do questions, of course, we go to public comment. Anybody want to make any comments on the Auditor's Annual Presentation? All right, then I'll turn it over to the Commission for questions. Any questions for the auditor?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kipling.
I think this federal ballot is going to need some more attention as we go towards implementing that, so maybe just a set of clarifying questions. So like a US Senate position would be up in 2026, like Senator Mike Rounds, his seat. So there would be one set of electors that get a federal ballot and would see that race on it, as well as everyone else would also still be able to vote for US Senate. So there'd be one group of people that would be defined as the electors of the US Senate race. Is that fair?
Yes.
And then there will be, say, the state legislature. That will be elected by, some overlap in the two groups, but that would be elected by just the residents, so like that meet the residency requirement. So we'd have one set of people that are electing state legislature, for example, and then be a slightly different group that elects the United States Senator. Is that...
Not a different group. So everybody in the state would, okay, everybody that meets residency requirements that's here would get a normal ballot, just a ballot like they always have. Those that are not meeting the residency requirements or are also using, let's say, a PMB address and they don't really live here, they will be getting just a federal ballot, which would have presidential and then the statewide, like the state senator or House Representative that goes to Washington DC.
Yep. And Mr. Chair, I'd just note, I found it interesting that Governor Roden's planning to sign this bill later today. I'd just point him to the 17th Amendment to the US Constitution and do his due diligence on whether you can have two different groups of electors selecting United States Senator and the state legislature. That's my only comment. Thank you.
And Leah, I know that you're not responsible for, was it 1208? But it does lend to some questions. Do you know, and again, I know you didn't write the bill, but do you know that just if I have a PMB, am I just automatically limited to that? Or can I prove that even though I have a PMB that I have residency here and I should get a full ballot?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you would be able to prove that. So when registering to vote, there's a Section 4A where a person can list where they live within the state. They would still have that 30 consecutive day residency requirement. That's another portion of 1066 that was changed, is to make it 30 consecutive days that a person lives here, and they would be able to prove that.
Good.
From my understanding. I mean, I'm just going based on what I've learned so far.
I'm going to pivot off of elections and go back to the liens. Do you know, do we only lien once a case is closed? You were talking about, you know, the Public Advocates Office bringing a whole batch down. Do they only do the lien once it's closed, or if, I mean, a case is continuous over the course of a year, a year and a half, can, is that lien updated? Do you know how that works?
Usually that is when the case is closed, and, but people can also have multiple liens, you know, like you could have other cases as well. So we are waiting for closure. There's a lot of things that go into that before we get that paperwork. Sometimes the holdup is getting the bills from the outside attorneys, and so there's many factors.
Commissioner Blumberg.
More of a comment than a question, just a thank you to your staff. They're so knowledgeable and so helpful. When anytime we have questions, I get thorough answers and prompt responses, and I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. I think I have the best staff in the county.
Commissioner Isie.
Mr. Chair, yeah, all the commissioners went to that HB 1208, and I was going to ask some questions regarding that, but it seemed like we got most of them answered. I did want to ask, though, some of the, from your perspective, what are the downstream consequences of the 30 consecutive day residency requirements? Are our voter registration lists going to be cleaned up because of that provision? Or what are some of the consequences that you expect to come from that? And, and further, how does one prove that there's been a resident for 30 days as a piece of mail or some other article?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm in committee at, at the legislature too. So I don't know that I have every answer for you, but the 30 consecutive days, so since the majority of our registrations are filtered through the Driver's License Bureau, the DMV, a couple of things. One, this legislation begins, so folks that are already registered to vote are already registered, so it doesn't change their status. It would be going forward, and the 30 consecutive days would, we do now in this legislation, and, and really, auditors are supposed to, it's not that we're supposed to investigate, but we are supposed to make sure that a person is qualified to be a registered voter. So we do need to ask those questions. We need to make sure they know that they're signing that form under penalty of perjury. We do now have the ability to ask for that information, because it is 30 consecutive days, and people will still be able to list in Section 4A on the voter registration form where they have lived. So truly, if, if a person that's using a PMB is an RVer and they have stayed in our state for 30 consecutive days, they can provide proof of that, and we will register them as a regular voter, not a federal-only ballot voter. A lot of this, I don't have answers for yet, because it will be implemented in some options in the system that we call Total Vote, where we register voters. That system is changing and is not being implemented until September of this year, so I don't really know what that's going to look like yet, because some of that will be taken care of with our options that are in that system. And Total Vote will change, the name will change also, so I don't know what that new name is off the top of my head. As far as, what was, tell me, remind me of the rest of your questions.
If I can remember. Yeah, that's why, do we call, yeah, is your office going to be doing any, like, voter registration cleanups and sifting through the data? Because I know you, I believe you can send out a card or a postcard to a certain address if it's not returned, and then they get taken off the registration list, or is there going to be work, any work to be done on that?
Yes. So, okay, we, we will be doing our regular list maintenance, which does help to clean up the voter registration list, but there's, there's a lot of steps that go into that process. It's a very large flow chart. But there is also a new bill that I'm not super familiar with, but it's SB 185, and that is going to also provide an option for, let's say, you have somebody that's registered to vote at your address, and you know they haven't lived there for a long time. It's going to be able, or we would be able to, as you come to our office, you would fill out a form, and you would be able to have us send them a postcard that would request that they respond to us. And that would start, kind of similar to that list maintenance process that we're already doing, but it would try to help catch some of those so that we can clean those up. We do have to abide, abide by the normal list maintenance process, but there, in several of these bills, there's been new legislation passed that is going to give us other options. There is an option in SB 185 also to challenge a voter's registration based on the address. Again, I don't know what that's going to look like. That wasn't a bill I was very involved in.
It might involve a sworn affidavit to that effect, and, yeah, as a prior political candidate and all the door-knocking I did, I certainly saw, you know, numerous false registrations, and 10 people registered at one apartment, one house, and, you know, clearly, they weren't registered at the address. It'd be good, so, long-term, it'll be good to have a formal process in place to get some of those folks removed and, but also updated too, because a lot of them has just simply moved to a different location, and they need to just update that. So, thank you for all the work of your, you and your staff.
Thanks.
Lee, I guess I'm going to have kind of a longer statement with setting up an expectation. I'm your liaison, and I'm, I'm not your boss. The electors are. And as your liaison, my role is to, you know, work with you on budget concerns, personnel matters that have to be elevated to the full commission's attention, that type of thing. So, I mean, our, our role is a little bit more limited than where, say, I'm liaison to the public defender, other non-elected department heads, where I have more of an active role in working with those individuals and resolving conflict, for example. A few years ago, we had an issue with a software update between the public defender and the state's attorney, that things got a little heated between the two and some conflict that we had to resolve, so I got to be involved in the middle of that. So one of the other department heads I'm liaison to is IT, and during the last election, we had some conflict. It was public, it was here. So I'm, my expectation is, you know, we need from you, we, I think the entire county would like to see this or have that expectation, is what do you expect from IT moving forward as far as support when it comes to election? I'd like you to route that through me, just kind of a, a work plan or, you know, expectations, that type of thing, so that we can avoid conflict between, I mean, conflict happens, it's just not, nobody always gets, not everybody always gets along. But I, by having expectations and knowing what's, is expected from the work environment will eliminate those conflicts. So I'm just going to ask that you provide that to me, so I can work with the IT director on resolving any issues that we have. Is that reasonable?
Oh, of course, yes.
Okay.
And I appreciate having a liaison, and so I would love to have that communication with you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on then. Thank you. Suland Heritage Museum Annual Presentation, Mr. Hoskins.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. The Suland Heritage Museums were formed in 1974 through a joint cooperative agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. We operate three buildings. The Old Courthouse Museum, which is owned by Minnehaha County, the Pettigrew-Homan Museum, which is owned by the city of Sioux Falls, and the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center, which is owned by the county, leased by the city. This morning, I'm going to briefly go over some aspects of the museum's operation. Last year was the 50th anniversary of that joint cooperative agreement, and the museums were open seven days a week. The Pettigrew, the Old Courthouse Museum are open daily. We had visitors last year from 48 states and 27 foreign countries. The staff presented over 600 programs on and off-site to just over 31,000 people. We, staff and volunteers also presented over 1,500 guided tours through the historic Pettigrew House. The Old Courthouse Museum hosted 67 public pro, or public rentals in the courtroom and law library. We developed three new exhibits at the Old Courthouse in Pettigrew last year. Courthouse Chronicles at the Old Courthouse Museum is really a history of how the Old Courthouse Museum went from county courthouse and how the courthouse developed and was used to a museum in 1974. That exhibit is still open at the Old Courthouse Museum. Another exhibit, now here this, is an exhibition on breakthroughs in recorded sound, and really features exhibitions from the Victrola and wire recorders to 8-tracks and CDs. An interesting exhibit. One exhibit that required quite a bit of cooperative work was an exhibit on the first Sioux Falls Historic District up at the Pettigrew-Homan Museum. Last year was the, also the 50th anniversary of the Cathedral Historic District, and we worked closely with the neighborhood and the city's Board of Preservation to develop an exhibit about those, that cathedral district, and how it set the pattern for other historic districts within the community. Cooperative ventures are really one of the keys to the museum's operation and success. Individual donors, volunteers, schools, businesses, organizations contribute a lot to the museum's program. Now, just to give you a few examples of some of those organizations, we work closely with Southeast South Dakota Tourism, cross-promoting our organization. Tourists are a big part of the business, obviously 27 foreign countries is interesting. We work with the city's Board of Preservation in developing the Cathedral Historic District exhibit, the neighborhood, neighbors' association in the cathedral. We work with South Dakota Game Fish and Parks for presenting programs at Beaver Creek Nature Area, both our Pioneer Day Camp in the summer and Homesteader Day in the fall, our cooperative ventures. Worked with Woodlawn Cemetery Association for our Woodlawn by Lantern and Historic Walking Tours. The Mary Chilton DAR Foundation provided $5,000 to rehouse and organize the Argus Leader Photographic Print Collection that we got a couple of years ago. Friends of Traditional Music, longtime supporter of our concert series that happen Friday noons at the courthouse. And I'll just mention Knife River, South Dakota, who has worked with us for a number of years, providing the into the pit, quarry tours, get it twisted up. Something that's been a great partnership with the museums. Helping the staff to accomplish all of these programs and activities, we've had 126 volunteers last year who contributed just over 3,800 hours. On average, we have 37 volunteers each month working with the museum. They're not always the same. We do work with different groups. We recognize that valuable contribution of our volunteers at an annual volunteer banquet. Our next one will be on April 23rd of this year. A number of years ago, the Minnehaha County Commission and the city of Sioux Falls authorized the Suland Heritage Museums to create an endowment at the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. And, and the endowment annually provides that we can draw up to 4% of the average balance, excuse me, over, over the last 12 quarters. Revenue from that endowment enters our budget through the museum's Special Enterprise Fund and pays for a lot of our programs, educational programming, exhibits, conservation of artifacts. Our museum internship program is paid with endowment money. Over the last few years, the endowment has really started to grow, and we were blessed last year with a generous donation of $100,000 from the James and Marlene Winkler Charitable Our two biggest artifacts are, of course, the Old Courthouse Museum and the Pettigrew-Homan Museum. Both buildings are 135 years old. They have interesting mechanical systems, and every day's an adventure with the buildings. But they're really something that we need to continue to care for and pay attention to. And I'd like to thank the commission for recently approving the Old Courthouse Museum Roof Repair Project. It's something that is badly needed. As we go into the future, really, the Suland Heritage Museum staff continue to really try and build our relationships and cooperative ventures within the community. We've learned that the visitor's experience is key to, is key to our growth. Great educational programs, diverse exhibits, outstanding customer service are really what encourage the public to keep coming back. I'd like to thank the commission for 50 years of support of the Suland Heritage Museums. I think it's been a great organization, and I'll argue that I have the best staff in Minnehaha County. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those now.
All righty. Thank you, Bill. We'll take public comment on the museum. All right. Commission, questions? Commissioner Blumberg.
Thank you. And just to repeat the same statement I made on the last presentation, your staff does an amazing job. They work hard and have had the benefit of your leadership, and I just want to send a thank you to all of them for the work that they do in the community and in the events that you hold at the various museum sites.
Bill, thank you for what you do and for your staff. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Short Elliott Hendrickson, Inc. for construction administration of project MC 2012, Structure 50087-120, Bridge Replacement. Hey, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioner. Jacob Morris, County Highway Department. This is a construction administration agreement with Short Elliott Hendrickson. This is covered by a grant with the state of South Dakota. We cover the cost upfront and then ask for reimbursement after we make payments. The structure was awarded earlier this year, and the, they plan on starting on it around
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions, action?
Mr. Chair, one quick question. Jacob, did you say this has already been paid for by the state through a grant, or...
Yes. So the structure, so the grant was awarded by the state, which includes construction, the remainder of design and bidding, and then construction administration as well. So the construction contract has been awarded. This would be the construction administration or oversight during construction portion of the contract.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement between the county and the Short Elliott Hendrickson, I'm sorry, for construction administration of that project number for the bridge replacement.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Authorize chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the University of South Dakota to provide project management, data analysis, and community engagement services performed by the Center for Rural Health Improvement in the amount of $65,000. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So as the chair noted, this is a services agreement. It is tied to the agreement that we did last week with, I introduced one last week for Think 3D in utilizing funds from the MacArthur Foundation's capstone grant award of $250,000 for the next two years. This particular agreement before you today is the second of three that you'll see regarding services provided under the funding of the agreement. This in particular is with the University of South Dakota, specifically their Center for Rural Health Initiatives, headed up by Aaron Surtzka. We've had a longstanding relationship with them. We've had a longstanding relationship with them as well. As the chair noted in the, in the title, it does basically provide for project management. What that generally includes is the conduct of meetings, the filing of reports, and also just maintaining a focus on the, the goals of the Safety and Justice Challenge. Also data analysis, so there are requirements for the grant that we provide certain data and information on a, on a recurring basis. This team will provide that. It's also shared with the broader Safety and Justice Challenge group and of course community engagement services. What that includes is, is generally planning the community engagement events under this contract. And I will note, this is a smaller amount that has traditionally been awarded to the Center for Rural Health Improvement, that's by design as we look at going through this last phase of the Safety and Justice Challenge. So for project management in particular, we, we will see a lesser frequency of Safety and Justice Challenge meetings. Typically, we've met every other month in the past. Going forward, it'll be on a quarterly basis. And for the community engagement services, typically we've tried to do up to four community engagement events each summer. This year will be, it'll be two community engagement events and of course, the staff at USD will be coordinating those. I do recommend your approval of this agreement. Once signed, we'll get the first installment over the, over to the Center for Rural Health Improvement. And again, as mentioned last week, we'll come back before you within the next month or two and just give a broad rundown of what we have going on with the MacArthur Grant. Are there two questions? That's all I have.
All right, public comment on this agenda item. Commissioner, turn it to you for action.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All the rule.
Blumberg.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kurski.
Aye, motion carries. Now, at the opportunity for public comment, we take public comment, five minutes per individual, 30 minutes total. Anybody here like to address the commission? Please, make sure you sign in, in the back too.
I sure will.
Yeah, that comment. And state your name.
Sure, my name is Rian Olem, I'm a member of Minnehaha County, a resident of, and I just want to make a couple of comments. I've been here before, always concerned about election issues, so I am very excited today about the governor signing House Bill 1066 and House Bill 1208. Those are two that personally have been very important to me. And I quick went to archives.gov looking up the 17th Amendment to the US Constitution, direct election to US senators. Passed by Congress on May 13th, 1912, and ratified on April 8th, 1913, the 17th Amendment modified Article 1, Section 3 of the Constitution by allowing voters to cast direct votes for US senators. Prior to its passage, senators were chosen by state legislatures. So, to me, House Bill 1208 is a fantastic compromise, allowing those who don't qualify for residency in South Dakota to be able to cast federal votes. And I would also like to ask Governor Roden to do his due diligence and sign these bills as agreed upon and voted upon by the legislature who represent we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on then to commission liaison reports. Commissioner Isie.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment. I was able to attend the ICAP, or short for InterLakes Community Action Project. They had a, the quarterly board meetings up in Brookings, I was able to ride down with some of their staff and attend that and it's been a great learning experience seeing how that organization is involved in the community, but also the relationship with their own county human services department, so looking forward to working throughout the year.
Commissioner Benega.
I just had one committee meeting with the Juvenile Justice Center progress report on the building and things are not quite on schedule at this point, but they're going to hopefully catch up this summer and things are going fairly well and still under budget, which is a nice issue to deal with.
Mr. Kiple. We had planning and zoning meeting last night, a joint meeting with the city and a joint, and the standalone county meeting. We had in both bodies, the combined and separate county, considered two zoning text amendments consistent with the implementation of the new comprehensive plan. We're looking at an ordinance passed last night for easier transfer of building eligibilities and then also creating the concept of accessory dwelling units. So that will, for the county version of those text amendments, that will come to this body in the next month or so and for the joint jurisdiction area, that will come to a joint meeting of the city council, county commission, and probably at the end of April. And just a reminder, we do have a joint meeting with the city council today at 5 o'clock. I think we have mainly just a couple of presentations, I think, from the link and what's the other, Housing, Logan Penfield from the Housing Department. So, see, hopefully a quorum of us at 5 o'clock. Thanks.
Personally, I had a couple of things, I know several of you, well, I saw Commissioner Heisey there, was anybody else who Metro Growth Alliance?
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Kiple was there. Annual meeting last Wednesday, we had election of officers, the membership advisory board chair and also the secretary treasurer for the executive board for Sum Metro Growth Alliance gave out some real good community awards. Sum Metro Growth Alliance is continuously increasing its scope in a very positive way that allows the communities within a four-county area to let, leverage the Sum Metro Growth Alliance's staff for economic development within their communities. So, I really enjoy seeing the way that organization is building and growing and helping the surrounding communities. Tomorrow is the city, county, school, district lunch club meeting and I have a meeting also as liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, so I will be there. Commissioner Blumberg, were you planning on attending?
Yes, I plan to attend.
Thank you for that. That is all I have for liaison reports. Anybody else? Commissioner Blumberg?
I just wanted to give a quick update from the library board. We met a couple of weeks ago and have been discussing plans to move forward as the library director has officially settled on a date for her retirement. So, it's an interesting time to be looking at a replacement and discussions are taking place.
Yep. All right, moving on then to non-action commission discussion, anything? All right, moving on then to, we will have an executive session, so I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn to exec, or to, I guess adjourn to executive session for the purposes of South Dakota codified law 125, 2134 and 6. So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries, we will be next door in a few minutes.